Present.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Ms. Barazza.
Present.
Thank you. For yours, Mr. Stenbridge. Um, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you guys might be on two devices, maybe? I hear an echo.
Hopefully not now.
There you go. Thank you.
Ah, okay. Yeah, two of me is not necessary. Um. We're now, we're now at a rediscussion scheduled for 11:30 a.m. Uh, we will remind folks as earlier, we are a six-member panel today. But that, we will ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this time.
Yes, Mr. Secretary, uh, forty-four, I'm sorry, Forty-Six High Street, number two on the eleven thirty.
So that would be case BOA one five nine nine three two six with the address of Forty-Six High Street. You can go ahead and explain yourself in the slide before.
Yes, sir. Uh, good, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Nick Cizula, McDermott, D. Miller, and Kennedy. He are asking for a deferral, one administratively for a full board, uh, but to, um, just to provide some more time for the, uh, developer and the appellant to, uh, work out some details with the Butters on a memorandum of understanding. Uh, being holidays, things are a little tight with time to review. We want to be respectful of their ability to review, uh, some of the documents and it just, you know, we, it's just too tight. Um, and we want to, so asking for administrative deferral, but also, uh, time to, to review that with them as well. So, I did hear, uh, previously, Attorney, uh, Burkhardt was, uh, mentioning certain dates. Any of those dates who work, January twenty-eighth, February, uh, February fourth, whatever's available would be great. Thank you.
Caroline, just to confirm what's available?
We have January twenty-eighth, February fourth, and February twenty-fifth.
Okay, and you said any of those, so, uh.
Yeah.
Take a motion?
Motion to defer to January twenty-eighth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. You then.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Secretary?
Yeah.
Uh, Kyle Smith here on behalf of the owner of thirteen Winship Street.
The last one at the one thirty, I mean, all of them.
So that would be for case BOA one six four three one one six on street with the address of thirteen Winship Street. You can go ahead and explain first.
Yes, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, this is our second time requesting an extension. Uh, we presented it twice before the B A I A. In the first meeting there had been requested, uh, changes to the scope of the project, which we were able to implement. Uh, at the conclusion of the second meeting, when we had the vote of non-opposition of the B A I A, back in early October, we submitted updated plans to ISD. ISD, for reasons I can't explain, has not been able to turn around timely a updated refusal letter, which we only just received as of yesterday. Um, the B A I A requested a couple of things. One specifically was the additional presence of off-street parking, which we were able to accommodate. It has to be accessed across another parcel commonly owned by the current owner of thirteen Winship. So we're able to accommodate, uh, those things needed to obtain community and B A I A support, knowing that they would trigger other zoning violations. Uh, and that zoning refusal letter was only provided by ISD as of yesterday. Uh, Stephanie Haynes, the scheduler for you, has requested that we defer just so that we can perfect notice with the updated violations. But again, the B A I A and community approval that we have are non-opposition was contingent upon these things being implemented in the plans as we have provided to Z B A. So we are needing an extension only to help ISD in their delay in getting to a updated refusal letter. Um, and we would be looking to speak before you as rapidly as possible.
Thank you. With that, uh, are there, Caroline, what are the dates again?
We could do February fourth, February twenty-fifth, or March eleventh.
And I guess only the delay was due to ISD review. February is now two months, three months out. Is there any conceivable way of getting on the schedule before then?
Unfortunately, February fourth is the earliest available date.
So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
Motion to defer to February fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Are there any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the eleven thirty?
Yes, Mr. Secretary.
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I have two, uh, one sixty-five D Street and eighty-one Lexington.
Uh, we'll start with case BOA one five seven five five eight four with the address of eighty-one Lexington Street.
Uh.
Let's start and then we'll move on to the next one. Go ahead.
Sir, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher of Six Eight Six Architects with the business address Ten Fours Road, uh, seeking a deferral at this time. Uh, the plans have been filed, uh, with more than adequate time at ISD. Um, we've been reached out several times. The plan examiner with no response. Uh, we are still awaiting those plans. Um, so we request a brief deferral so that we may, uh, receive the new letter.
So Caroline, February fourth is the next available?
Yes.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
To February fourth.
Go ahead.
Motion to defer to February fourth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Uh, and then one sixty-five D Street.
Which is case BOA one six five zero six nine zero with the address of one sixty-five D Street. Go ahead first.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, James Christopher of Six Eight Six Architects with the business address, Ten Fours Road and Branch. Maybe on behalf of, um, this project before you left Tuesday, there was a scripness error on my drawings. I've revised that. I sent the plans into the Z B A, uh, and, um, Stephanie Hayne requested that, uh, a secret, uh, deferral so that the plans examiner may, uh, review the plan. There's been no change to it, but, uh, that, uh, that's the request of the, uh, Z B A.
Okay, and are we still at February fourth, Stephanie? I mean, um, Caroline?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to February fourth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Is Mr. Melton also requesting a deferral?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Chair, uh, Andrew Melton, Melton Frey, uh, Architects. Uh, we'd like to request, uh, this is our second deferral, um, and basically we.
But what, we just need the property for now?
Uh, thirty-six Akron Street, Boston.
Okay, the second, okay, Secretary Stenbridge can read that into the record first.
That would be for case BOA one five nine one nine three three with the address of thirty-six Akron Street. Uh, go ahead and explain this one.
Uh, yes, the reason for the extension is, uh, so that we can have a, a, a second meeting with the Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which was requested by them just, uh, last Friday. So we want to respect, uh, you know, their, their input and their wishes. So that's the reason for the extension.
Oh, and what dates do we have now, Caroline?
We have February fourth, February twenty-fifth, and March eleventh.
Mr. Melton?
February fourth would be fine. That'd be great.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to February the fourth.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Barazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Have a good, uh, holiday.
Thank you. You too.
Thanks. Bye-bye.
And for the request for withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe? If not, then we will, um, resume.
Twenty-seven Dudley, I think there's less. Less.
He's, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Oh, I just said twenty-seven Dudley seems to be the next one.
Oh, um.
Madam Chair, we also have one twenty-five B Street.
Oh, one twenty-five B, sorry. Yes.
No, that's, that's okay. Uh, so we'll skip down to case BOA one six three three one six zero with the address of one twenty-five B Street. If the applicant's in or they're representative or present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Good morning. My name is Robert Latour. Um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So the purpose of, um, this meeting is, um, Dish Wireless is looking to install in, in a tenant's facility, um, a total of nine antennas on the rooftop of, uh, one twenty-five B Street. The, um, per the zoning, there was a violation due to the setback required from the roof not met. Um, the purpose of the install for, um, the setback was due to, there is a agreement with American Tower, who owns an easement on the rooftop that, uh, would only allow us to go on a certain location, which would be above the penthouse where T-Mobile is currently located. Uh, if you want to scroll down a little, you could be, you'd see it a little better on the rooftop view. Um, keep going down. There you go. You can see, uh, go up right, so, um, to the right where that penthouse is. Um, that is where Dish Wireless is looking to install, um, the antennas, which will be concealed to, um, match with the brick around the current area.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the community process. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on the ninth of September, at which concerns were raised regarding the visibility of the antenna installation, as well as the proposed height of the structure. There's also concern about whether the installation would emit anything that would affect quality of light, such as noise, light, or result in other community impacts. Concerns were also raised relating to the context of the structure in a residential block with a park. A Butters felt a more, a more commercial area would be appropriate for this proposal. The Saint Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association, uh, had a presentation from the petitioner, and many of the same concerns were raised. Ultimately, they did not take a position, that group did not take a position on the proposal. And with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caroline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Sydney from Counselor Flynn's office. Counselor Flynn sent an opposition letter to the board this morning, as well as an email to ISD seeking clarification for the neighbors on the zoning violations due to their concerns on lack of anything related to changes of roof, structure, or height. Counselor Flynn would like to join both his neighbors and the Saint Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association and go on record in opposition to a lack of community process, a disregard for neighbors' concerns, as well as no follow-up on information requested by our office and the local civic group from the meeting. On community process, neighbors in the area were reportedly unaware of the proposal until a meeting had to be requested by the Saint Vincent's Lower End Neighborhood Association. At that meeting, nearby families with young children expressed concerns by the proximity of the cell tower and any radiation to their homes and children, as well as Flaherty Playground across the street. These concerns from parents of the newborn children, the civic association, and the counselor's office were often talked over by the proponent in a manner that was not respectful to the community. Many residents expressed concern that if studies show in the future that this proximity was harmful, it would be too late for their families. Unfortunately, these neighbors left the meeting feeling their concerns were not addressed seriously and dismissed out of hand. At that meeting, the counselor's office and civic group asked for information on any other potential locations that were considered that may satisfy concerns on proximity to residents and young families with newborns. However, that information was never provided. For these reasons, the counselor continues to join his neighbors in Saint Vincent's in opposition to a community process that was lacking in overall public safety concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two additional raise hands, Madam Chair. Christopher?
Hi, uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Christopher Flaherty. Uh, I live directly across the street from the proposed, from the proposal at one twenty-five B Street. Um, uh, first off, I'd just like to, uh, just, uh, correct Siggy from Neighborhood Services. Saint Vincent's did take a stance on this and was opposed to this proposal. Um, I think Counselor Flynn's office noted that. Um, so, so first and foremost, um, I'm personally very concerned, uh, surrounding like the unknown health, potential health hazard associated with, um, the exposure to the cell tower. I have three small children. Uh, several of my neighbors, we all have young families with, with, with small children. And, uh, so we all share that, the same concerns surrounding it. I just feel like the cell phone tower, it should, I, I don't think it should be, you know, suggestions were made. I don't think it should be in residential district where, you know, I have to put my head down on the pillow at night on the third floor approximately fifty feet away. You know, there's, there's going to be nine new cell phone towers. Um, that's very concerning to me. Um, I just don't think it's a net positive addition to the neighborhood. Um, it's not residential. It doesn't help with the housing crisis. Um, and the, and then, and then secondly, um, I, I believe that, it appears that a few of the violations were missed by ISD. Um, Article sixty-eight, Section eight, maximum allowed building, building height. This building is an old schoolhouse. It currently stands at sixty-two feet tall at the, at the, the roof line of the, of the penthouse. Um, I'm not sure, um, that the, the proponent spoke to the additional height or how, how tall the building's going to be to the board. That was a very, uh, brief, brief presentation, but, um, if I may, I think they're going to add roughly eight or nine feet to the penthouse, bringing this building up to approximately seventy feet. Um, there is, many questions have arisen surrounding, like shadows being cast on the playground and shadows cast on, on neighbors' homes, um, which, you know, which weren't really addressed. That's kind of, that's, that sort of, um, is what led to the, the sentiment of frustration from the neighborhood and the lack of transparency, lack of communication. Um, this proponent went before the board on December, uh, excuse me, November nineteenth. Asked to get back before the board now, today on December third. Last week was Thanksgiving. A lot of conversations seem to be had about this, and I just want to implore upon the, the board that, um, you know, I think that there is a couple of violations that were missed by ISD. Uh, but again, um, overall height of the, maximum building height is going now to seventy feet, almost a high-rise. Um, and then secondly, roof structure, you know, we've had neighbors that have tried to put a dormer shed, uh, two and a half story wood frame, single family, try to add a dormer shed to their building and, and have, have, had gone through lengthy, lengthy process with roof structure violations and overall height. And, and this project wants to go from, you know, an additional ten feet on, on top of a sixty-two foot structure. So, um, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you again.
Jake?
Hello, everyone. Um, Jake Kachapalia, uh, another resident of the neighborhood. I live on B Street, just around the corner from the proposal. Uh, wanted to echo the sentiment that Chris shared. Um, I think there's, uh, I was one of those that, that went through the zoning process for a shed roof, and it, and it's striking how that, uh, roof violation on this project was not flagged. So, um, I have concerns about that, and I have concerns about the other implications for the community. It doesn't seem that this has any, uh, public benefit for the residents of the neighborhood. Just wanted to share that. I'm in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I don't see any additional raise hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can the applicant speak to some of the concerns that have been raised, uh, visibility, uh, from the street, uh, health, any health implications, roof structure and height violation?
So I will speak to, um, the roof, um, violation. Um, and then I have Donald Hayes, who's on here, who is a specialist, who's going, who did, um, E M E study to, uh, an additional one, which I had told them at the meeting that they, that we would, um, do an additional study just to show them the concerns of the RF frequencies. So as far as the roof height, um, we did send this back to ISD. There is no violation, um, for the ordinance, eighty-six point six for rooftop mounted antenna. The height of the building, anything more than forty-five feet, the maximum height of antenna can be twenty feet or twenty percent of the building height, whichever is greater, and that is not the case here. And then as far as, um, the, they will not be able to see the antennas from the ground. It will be concealed over the penthouse to match the brick that surrounds the building. And I will, um, ask if we can have Don speak, Donald Hayes, um, on behalf of the E M E and RF frequencies.
Okay, uh, good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Uh, so my name is Donald Hayes, H A E S. Uh, I do not work for Dish or any of the parties here. Uh, I am an independent consultant. Uh, I am registered in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to provide services relative to non-ionizing radiation, and I can forward my certificate if that's what you are looking for. Uh, for this particular installation, a, uh, an evaluation was done by a company known as Fox Hill Telecom. Uh, what this evaluation did was to use the guidance by the Federal Communication Commission, the F C C, uh, and its, um, uh, sister organization, if you will, the Office of Engineering and Technology in bulletin number sixty-five. Uh, all of that information was used to prepare what's known as theoretical predictions of what the maximum potential RF exposure could be from a facility like this, uh, at this location if it were to be built. Uh, this particular, um, uh, report is forty-two pages in length. Uh, it, it's very detailed. Uh, I did look at this, uh, in, in extreme detail uh, from my area of expertise. By the way, I've been performing consulting services in the field of non-ionizing radiation, uh, since nineteen eighty-eight, when I was working at MIT. Uh, anyway, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the, uh, uh, report and in the conclusions, uh, we will find that there is not a potential for any member of the public to receive an exposure in excess of both the Federal Communications Commission's uh, exposure limits for members of the public, which is twenty-four seven, but also the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health Regulations uh, through, uh, one oh five C M R one twenty-two. Uh, and I would be happy to answer any questions or go through my C V if that's what you would like to.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I, I do. Um, I noticed in the drawings, um, on drawing seventeen of twenty-five of the C D submission for the project, uh, there are some warning signs, um, you know, the blue, the yellow, and the, and the orange that exceed, um, the F C C occupation exposure limit are those, but I couldn't find the locations of those warning signs.
So those are located on top of the rooftop, and those are basically, if you're standing directly in front of the antenna, those are for basically anyone on the roof that is working on the antennas or working on the roof. And those are, um, mandatory regulations to have those signs.
So they, they are literally on the equipment, um, those signs are on the equipment?
Nope, they would be, um, on the out, like, so if they're, it, they'll, um, it actually will tell you. It should tell you in the notes where each sign is to be located. It's not on the equipment. It would be, um, either on the ground level or, um, outside of where the antenna is located.
Right, so how did, how does anyone, so it, it, um, so it would, I see that no public can have access to it, but to maintain the roof. but to maintain the roof, how does the general public know that you have to contact the Dish to access the roof? How is that, how is that kind of warranted?
They would contact the board to access to the roof because Dish doesn't own the roof? So I don't know if you're understanding your question.
Say that again?
Are you asking if a-
So how does a general contractor that needs to repair the roof, the rubber membrane of the roof, how do, how do they be warned not to come in close proximity to the equipment?
So through those signs, they can clearly see the signs. They would be on the outside of the equipment where anyone can see it. So it's basically for, if you're standing directly in front of the antenna, which you shouldn't do anyways, but it's basically for that purpose.
Yeah, so that, I mean, that would just be my concern that, you know, how are, how are just-
And there's already signs up there because T-Mobile has antennas up there already.
Okay, so are there any kind of regulations that the building owner needs to abide by with?
No.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing done. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion of approval with review from the planning department, special attention to ensuring that there is no visibility of the antenna from the street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
No.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, case has been deferred, which takes us to case B O A one five five two two ninety with the address of twenty-seven Dudley Street. If the applicant and/or they're representative present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you very much, Cameron Merrill, on behalf of the applicant. Business address, one hundred State Street, Boston, Massachusetts. This is a matter which comes before the board in connection with the two thousand nineteen case where this property was approved to be converted to a six-unit building. Within the six-unit building is a larger unit, which was on two levels, and it was determined that the best operation of this building, and in conjunction with the goal is to provide more housing within the city, was to split that unit into a new unit, which is four hundred fifty square feet, and a new unit, which is seven hundred and sixty square feet, as opposed to the one existing unit. The layout is somewhat unique in that back section of this building. There was a request by ISD to provide a clarification letter, which is now on your screen. That was provided in early October and has been, or excuse me, September, and has now been reviewed, which ought to clarify some of the concerns and questions raised. Architect Peter Banco is on this call as well, and he can help explain some of the issues if the board has further questions. But effectively, this is a split of one unit, only exterior changes to provide an additional studio unit within this building.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing done. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. When I say conducting a butters meeting, there were several butters who attended. Two butters vocalized their support for the proposal, saying that the applicant were great neighbors that kept their word and were impeccably clean and neat with the property. The applicant went on to meet with the Highland Park Neighborhood Association, which voted to approve the proposal, but wanted the studio apartment that was created to be rented at eighty percent A M I for, to be income restricted. With that, we'll defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no raise hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion? Are there additional questions, or is there, can someone make a motion?
Madam Chair, I did not see the plans under the submissions. So if someone has seen them, that would be great, but I did not see them in my sent from Stephanie. Those were missing.
We just received them this morning.
Okay, so then I'm going to put a motion to defer so that we can have the opportunity to review those plans.
I'm not sure it necessarily matters, but when they, in terms of being received, that was received from ISD. We had submitted them in September, just for clarification.
I know, we've had to defer you a couple of times already.
Yeah, if Stephanie can speak on that, but I cannot provide a motion without reviewing the actual-
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Yep, okay. So I'm sorry that I was, I was quiet, but I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss something versus my colleagues. So I'm glad that you confirmed that we just got them this morning. So I will put forward the motion to defer until we have the opportunity to review those drawings.
Caroline, are we, what are the dates of the appeal now?
Since we have everything, it's due January fourteenth.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion to defer to January fourteenth so that we can review the plans for the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. And it looks like we have to wait until one o'clock for the interpretation. So I will see you then.
Recording stopped.